Baltimore City Council Budget Appropriations Committee, we are here for the Board of Liquor License Commissioners of Baltimore City, more well-known as the Baltimore City Liquor Board. Mr. Page, if you would kick things off, please introduce your senior team. I'm going to ask that you keep your slide to two to three minutes, I think you only have one service. I'm joined to my left by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. To his left, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District. To my right, Vice President of the Council, Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District. To her right, Councilman Robert Stokes. To his right, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District, Member of the Committee. We have Karan Banks and Poetry Deal representing Mayor Catherine Pugh. From Council President, Jack Young's office, we have Rebecca Tab. Just give me one second, please.
Yes, Sir. Mr. Chairman.
Doug, take it away, please. And if you can introduce everyone.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Members of this Committee. I'm Douglas Page, Executive Secretary of Baltimore City Liquor Board, also known as BLLC. On behalf of our Chairman, Albert Matriciani Jr., Commissioners Elizabeth Hafey, Aaron Greenfield, and Harvey Jones, I thank you for this opportunity to appear before this Honorable Committee. Joining me today is Mr. Tom Akris, my Deputy Executive Secretary and Fiscal Officer for the Agency, aside their name, Liquor Board Accountant, and Matt Akomar, for the very first time in the history of the Agency, our Community Liaison. By now, he's met with most of the Council and staff, just to give an overview of what his job responsibilities will be. The Liquor Board, the Agency is charged and tasked with enforcing statutes, laws, ordinances, Board rules and regulations concerning the operations of alcoholic beverage and adult entertainment establishments in Baltimore City. The divisions within the Agency consist of the Board of Commissioners, Administrative Division, and the Inspections Division. As of May 1, 2018, the Board issued 1,150 licenses for license year 2018-2019. License renewal for adult entertainment licenses begins June 1, 2018, and ends June 30, with renewal of 27 adult entertainment licenses of Baltimore City. In our presentation today, the BLLC will provide and explain the following: inspections overview with a four-year look-back, Inspection Division production, license year 2016-17, and license year 2017-18, calls for service or 311 response rate, administrative and Board overview and production, Board initiatives for license year 2018-2019. We will provide an overview. Again, we'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing this opportunity to present and to explain the state of BLLC. At this time, I would invite Tom Akris, my Deputy and Fiscal Officer, to go over the presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Committee. I'll just be very brief in the outline, and hew to the instructions of the Chair. Just a quick look, you see an 18 percent increase in inspections overall this past license year over last license year. As you can see, our license year runs from May 1st to April 30th, doesn't follow the fiscal year, so you can see the increase that we had. We also have a 96 percent response rate to 311 calls within 24 hours. We close those 311 calls. And just very quickly, you can see this past year, we saw an uptick of importance is the investigation one-day event. We had 108 percent increase in special investigations and violations charged this past year. That's on Slide 6. And then that last column where we have number of locations inspected three or more times, as per the law, we are supposed to inspect locations at least four times per year. We are finally at full capacity in our inspectors, with our inspectors, that we completed that process in about March. About 78 percent of our licensees received three or more inspections this license year. Our goal is to get to 90 to 95 percent next year. We've seen production go up all across the board. I'm on Slide 7, particularly in the violation hearings and non-violation hearings. You see there's a jump. This year, we had 123 violation hearings. I'm just moving through this quickly. If you look at our conviction rate, it also went up. We have a 96 percent conviction rate whenever we do charge violation hearings. And of important economic note, for new establishments, this past license year, the Liquor Board issued 30 licenses, new licenses, these are new businesses, which is a 50 percent increase over last year. And one important note, you see the reduction in licenses that have been issued. We see an 11 percent drop. Last year, it was 1,240, now we're at 1,120. And some of that has to do with businesses closing, a lot, some of that has to do also with individuals just getting out of the business. So you can see, we're on the decline for licenses in the city. And those are some of the reasons why we have seen the production, as I said, we're at full capacity right now with our staffing. And lastly, the new initiative with the Community Liaison, as the Executive Secretary mentioned, the first time in our agency's history, we have a Community Liaison. That liaison is charged with proactively scheduling attendance at community association events around the city. He's been in contact with your offices, and we look forward to putting out a schedule of June by the end of, close of business this week. And each month, we'll be relaying that schedule to the Mayor's Office and City Council. And I'm free to take any questions that you have at this time.
Thanks, Tom. I just have a comment. Doug, you and Tom have just been absolutely phenomenal to work with. I continue to be impressed day by day by the performance of your agency, the responsiveness, and I really do appreciate everything that, you know, I've seen out of your agency and the working partnerships, so thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was still writing my question. Couple things, thank you again, especially for bringing on the liaison, that's a big deal, especially when it comes to communication and outreach in our neighborhoods, because we do get a lot of questions around liquor licenses, liquor stores, problem stores, that kind of thing. So I thought it was a really good move and great to meet you, welcome aboard. I just had two, two quick questions. One, you mentioned that they are, all licensees are inspected four times a year. Are the same inspectors used for routine inspections as when you're, there is a special investigation?
No. We, for the most part, we, there are a couple of our agents, which our inspectors are broken into Inspector 1, Inspector 2, and then Agent, and Chief Inspector. Our agents are really the ones that are conducting the special investigations, they work with the Vice Unit. The way we're structured, there are eight districts across the city, and each inspector is assigned to a district. When a special investigation is made, the Chief Inspector, along with one of the agents and the Vice Unit and/or Fire or other applicable agency, work together to conduct the special, the special investigations.
Okay. And what I'm getting at is, there's some, some belief that a few problematic stores are able to identify who the inspectors are, or may know when the inspections are coming, and are able to sort of clean up their act before inspectors arrive. Do you find that to be the case, or, and what protections are put in place to prevent that sort of thing from happening?
Well, actually, in our standard operating procedures on an annual basis, inspectors are rotated out of their districts. So if I may be in the 1st District, you know, this year, I'm going to be in the 8th District across town the next year. So there was an audit finding that stated that we had inspectors settled in districts, it's about two or three years ago when the state audit came out, and to address that, we created the SOPs, and we do rotate. So there's no person that's necessarily in a district that can have those kinds of relationships, and we want to avoid that.
And our inspectors, yeah, that's really my concern, is the relationships. So when there isn't a special investigation being done or conducted, even if you move an inspector out, are they aware or notified that there may be something going on across town, or is that information shared, or is it, is it siloed between sort of a need-to-know basis?
It's on a need-to-know basis. Sometimes, for instance, there could be language issues, and this past year, I'm very happy to say, we brought on a Spanish-speaking inspector and a Korean-speaking inspector. And if there are language issues that, you know, we may need some, some help with, there are times when we need to include some of the inspectors in on those communications.
Okay.
But for the most part, it's case-by-case basis.
The other issue I wanted to bring up, there's been a lot of discussion recently around alcohol and liquor store density. Is there an equity lens used when the, when you issue license, and consideration of proximity to liquor stores in communities? And really what I'm getting at is, there's a lot of data that we know exists around alcohol density and intersectionalities with violence and other public health outcomes that negatively impact our communities. And I know that through transform, which was done on the last council, there were reductions made that will go into effect next summer, I believe. But in the interim, as licenses are issued or transferred, what analysis is done to ensure that equity and density are considerations, and looking at violence trends in neighborhoods that licenses are being issued?
Just two points on that question. The first, in terms of density, the Alcoholic Beverages article speaks to whenever the Board issues licenses, and we're talking about new licenses, Class B restaurant licenses, that the Board has to take into account the number of licenses within that area. Another counterbalance to that is also the uniqueness of services as well. So, you know, if it's a brewery, for instance, Peabody Heights Brewery will go into a community, there may be liquor stores in that area, but because there's such a uniqueness of service of that particular location, that's something that the Board takes into consideration. So it's a give and take, per se. In regards to equity disparity, I can say that the Liquor Board right now is working with the Planning Department, Ms. Stephanie Smith. We've been in communications with her in terms of the equity disparity studies that they're doing there. And in a conversation that I had with Ms. Smith, they're going to be warehousing this information within planning, and we're going to seek out their guidance and advice when it comes to best practices in terms of incorporating that into our operations.
And is there a timetable for that?
Well, I've spoken with Ms. Smith, she said over the next couple of months, they're developing, you know, this warehouse, and we're going to be checking in on a regular basis, I could probably say on a monthly basis, to find out if we can pull down that information, see how we can incorporate it into our practices.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
Thank you. And while we're on equity, I want to commend you guys, because y'all have equity throughout your staff, and you should have mentioned that, because you have equity, you always have equity within your staff. So y'all need to say that when you come into these hearings, and people asking you about equity, you gotta let them know you've been doing that for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Schleifer?
Yeah, so unfortunately, the Chairman took the words that I was going to say, but he's the Chairman, so he gets to speak first. So I do want to thank you guys for the great work that you guys do, and your responsiveness to the issues when constituents call us and they have problems with different establishments or events that are having, you know, liquor licenses, getting the explanation from you guys on how it works, walking us through the process. It's invaluable, so we can relay that information back to our constituents, let them know what options they have to improve the quality of life in their communities. And so I just appreciate everything, Doug, that you do, and the rest of your team, to, to make that happen, and to help the citizens of Baltimore navigate through this, this process. I do have one quick question, I mean, just from your experience and stuff, this is again another agency where we like struggle, where there's city and state involved, and so Councilman Scott likes to discuss about the Police Department, how it's really a state agency, but then we get, you know, called about everything involving them, and then we don't really have the control to do certain things. And so with you guys, like, how does that work, that you guys are a state agency, but you're in the city, and so, I understand you got to follow state laws and city laws, and so, does it make sense for you guys to be a state agency, or would it make more sense for you guys to be a city agency?
Actually, I've never thought of it that way, Councilman. We consider ourselves an agency of all people, entire city of Baltimore, whether we got it by a state law that says we have to enforce and regulate the alcoholic beverages laws issued by the State of Maryland, but we're absolutely 100 percent pro-city and responding to all constituencies in the city of Baltimore.
Can I ask, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, not, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Just out of curiosity, how's the, where's the Liquor Board, Liquor Board's established through state code?
Yes.
We are.
We are.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Doug, or Councilman.
So in my entire tenure with the Agency, we've never sort of distinguished ourselves whether we, 95 percent state or 5 percent city. We have tried to address all concerns across the board. Whether those licensees or stakeholders asking us to address whether there's state issues or local issues, we've tried to have parity across the board, 100 percent.
And you, you guys are great, I mean, you're, you're very professional, you handle stuff, so I mean, I, it hasn't become an issue, but I'm, I'm just curious, and if it's too personal, let me know, is there a check, are you guys paid through the city?
So we're a self-sustaining agency.
Okay.
Our funds are derived from license fees, violation fees, service fees, paid by the license holders, one-day licenses. So actually, we return money to the City General Fund. After all expenses are paid, salaries are, absolutely, I think to the tune of $500 and...
$560,000 last year.
Last year. After all expenses, salaries are paid, we have returned to the City $560,000. So we're self-sustaining, and we hope to remain that way.
You should pat yourselves on the back. I believe you're one of four out of 55 agencies that are able to do that.
Very fiscal responsible, I think we've been, done our due diligence in being very conservative, absolutely, as an agency.
Wow. Sounds good.
We've worked really hard at it.
I'd say we, you know, we can talk about trying to get you guys a raise, but I think we'd have to go through the state, so.
Actually, my staff, they're asking for a raise, based on the involvement in the VRI initiatives. My guys are really tasked and charged with working almost around the clock, but it's a duty that we must perform, and we are performing it.
And we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes?
I just want to thank the Liquor Board, y'all always had equity, even when we go back to as far as Bill Henry's father, when he was...
Who was my first partner, by the way.
But I just wanted to share with you, because a lot of times, when we get calls, a lot of constituents think if there's a liquor establishment and people standing outside, it's the Liquor Board's job to clear the corner. So just to suggest that maybe more explaining to the residents, or when you come here, exactly what Liquor Board does and what it can't do.
Thank you, Councilman. That was one of the reasons we fought so hard to get funding for the Community Liaison, just to bridge that gap between all stakeholders, not just the industry, but the community, just to bridge the gap, to engage all stakeholders. And the community is a very important stakeholder, absolutely.
Mr. President? Oh, and we've been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead of the 13th District, also a member of the Committee.
Thank you.
The Councilmen say, would y'all look at raising your licenses fee, so you can raise more money?
Not so you can get raises.
So you can get raises. But I just, I just wanted to ask you, what's your turnaround time when a citizen call for a trouble, a tavern or a troubled bar? How, how quick do you get to that?
Mr. President, we respond within 24 hours, 96, and close out that complaint 96 percent of the time. So on an average, probably about two hours, if that, an hour to two hours.
Do you, are you getting more complaints about troubled bars and taverns compared to last year?
Last year, we received about 920, this year, we received about 870, so we saw a little bit of a drop.
Is it mainly the same characters over and over and over again?
Not necessarily. It, it can change from year to year. Some of, you know, the bad apples may have gone out of business, transferred, and then new ones appear.
Okay, no more questions.
Oh, Councilman Pinkett, I'm sorry.
Just one quick question, and it's great that the Liquor Board is a self-sustaining agency, but at what point does the fact that the Agency is funded by license fees, at what point does that work against decreasing the density of liquor establishments in areas? If you're being funded by the proceeds from those licenses, it, at some point, huh? What I'm saying, but in some, in some areas, you know, there might be too many liquor establishments, and there might be, you know, violations, there might be, you know, reasons to either reconsider or revoke certain licenses, but ultimately, that would work against, you know, being able to fund the Agency to the point where it needs to be funded. And so, you know, I don't, I'm not saying that it's happening on purpose, but, you know, how inclined would you even be to, to eliminate licenses if you know that that might, there might be a job connected to...
If, if I may answer that question, if a licensee is not in compliance, violation is issued, the Board deems them a bad actor, then their license is going to be revoked, whether or not, and it does not come into play whether or not this licensee will fund another position. That's not a question that's before the Board. The only question before the Board is whether or not the licensee broke the law. And in terms of, for us, moving forward, if we see a decrease in licenses, and we see an issue in terms of the revenue, we'll have to cross that bridge at that point. But I'll say, even with, as you notice, even if the licenses have dropped over the last few years, the licenses have dropped over the last couple of years, our revenues have gone up. And the reason why they've gone up is because we have better accounting practices in place, and we've been following the money, we've been capturing the money. So right now, as I said, last year, $560,000, we were operating at a deficit in 2014, 2015. We've had less licenses, and we're making more money now. And so we're, we're on a, on a good trend. So even if we do see some reduction in licenses, I believe we can still be self-sustaining.
And I guess my, my next question, kind of dovetailing off of that, is that, in, while we want to encourage those B licenses, which really show, you know, some economic vibrancy in many communities, unfortunately, in a lot of the community, too many communities, there are probably one of the BD7 licenses, where, you know, individuals, they don't really operate in a tavern, it's really just a room in the back where, you know, maybe they have a stool, but nobody ever goes back in there. Is there a concerted effort that the Liquor Board participates in to really help communities address those types of establishments, or are communities just kind of out there on their own to try to figure it out? And, because it is really nuanced to really address a liquor license, even to bring violations in a, in a way that the Board can really even consider. And I don't even know if most communities have enough information to really understand the process that you have to participate in to really put a legitimate complaint against a liquor establishment.
That's a very good question, Councilman Pinkett, and to answer that is one of the reasons why we have the Community Liaison piece now. Being proactive, going out there and sharing information in regards to what licenses actually do, how they operate, hours of operation, what their responsibilities are, and, you know, come next year, we'll give out information in terms of protest of renewals, too, and specific complaints. This is all part of that bridging the gap between stakeholders and the community. Now that we have the money, now that we have the, the person, we're going to be proactively doing that work. And just to address the other point, in terms of what the Liquor Board's doing, in that first series of slides, our special investigations, which include BD7 checks, where we send in Vice Unit officers to try to get in the back tavern portion, those have scored 108 percent. So we've done a number of investigations and held a number of licensees accountable, leading to suspensions and fines for those infractions, and we will continue to do that work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. I had, I had originally said I didn't have any questions for you guys, and that's because, frankly, you're the staff. If the Board had been here, I might have had questions for, for the Board. You guys are, you have a different role. One of the, the question that I did have that I thought maybe you could answer is, because you're governed by state code, and the General Assembly has a tendency to make little tweaks and not highly publicize them, is there, are there term limits still for Liquor Board members? I feel like there were, but are there still?
When you say members, you mean Commissioners?
Commissioners, for the Commissioners.
Yes, every two years.
They're, two...
Two years.
Two years, no, 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 I mean, like, term limits, like...
No, no, there's no term limit, per se, but you can be assigned to the Commission for a two-year period.
For a two-year period, but you can be reappointed indefinitely?
That's at the whim of whoever, the Mayor and the City Council President.
Okay, that was...
Councilman, to answer your question, there, there are no restrictions in the code that prohibit, or rather, prevent an individual from being appointed by the executive, by the Mayor or the Council President, because the Council President has two seats as well, one Commissioner and one alternate. There's nothing in the code that, that prevents the Mayor and the Council President from appointing the same person over and over in perpetuity?
The, the reason I'm asking this question...
Am I correct?
Yeah. Is because I understand that if the state code said that affirmatively, it would preempt anything at the local level, but if the state code is merely silent to the concept, we do have local law that limits members of Baltimore City Boards and Commissions to no more than two sequential terms, co-terminus with the Mayor's term of office. And so I was just wondering if anybody had looked into how those two things interact, given your fairly, you know, unconventional administrative structure?
So, Councilman, I, I only...
Can I say something?
Yes, Mr. President.
You know, I have a relationship with all of the Senators, so I talk to the Senators. So if Councilpeople have a relationship with their Senators, then they can get all the information that they want, in terms of the Liquor Board, the appointments, and all that little stuff. And what happened with the appointment was, because there was a tug-of-war between the Governor and the legislative, legislative branch, they decided to give me and the Mayor the power to appoint, and they are our appointees.
I, I, Mr. President, I'm not, I'm not arguing that in any way, shape, or form.
I'm not arguing, I'm giving you the information.
Right. What, what I'm just, what I'm wondering is, has anybody looked at, now that the Board members are appointed by the Mayor and the Council President, has anyone looked into whether the city's term limits for Board and Commission members now apply?
So Councilman, that's not a question, I got this, that, that's a statement, it's not a question that's appropriate for the Executive Secretary or the Deputy Executive Secretary, I invited them, I did not, intentionally did not invite the three Commissioners or the Alternate. That's a policy question that should be raised with, I, any combination of the state delegation for the city and/or the Mayor's Office. These two gentlemen are not in a position to answer a question about governing policy...
Mr. Chairman, I'm, clearly, I'm not articulating this properly. I'm not asking for policy to be changed.
You're asking if anyone's looked at it, I'm telling you that they would not be privy to that. You're asking about the policy that dictates how the Commissioners, who determine whether or not they have a job or not, or appointed, is above their pay grade.
It's, it's...
It's not an appropriate question for that.
It's a, I mean, with all due respect, it's, I'm, what I'm asking is a point of law, I'm just asking whether they've already researched it. If they haven't, then the answer is no.
Council, please don't answer that. Councilman, that's a question for the Solicitor's Office.
Okay, then, then that's fine.
But, but you're putting them in a compromising position by asking them if they've researched whether or not they can put term limits on their bosses.
No. Okay. I, I'll, I'll ask the city Solicitor, that's fine. I, I was just asking whether they already had or not, that was all. Okay, so...
Thank you.
Sorry.
There's no need to apologize.
I appreciate the professionalism and the continuity that staff has managed to provide as the Boards have changed over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want you to relay to the Board that I think they have done a great job, they've been very responsive to the concerns of the community, better than any other Boards that I have, you know, served with, or had interaction with. And I just want y'all to relay that back to your bosses, that I said, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Vice President Middleton?
I just want to make a statement, and I remember the days, maybe three or four years ago, you were, your team was out there in all of the communities, late hours. My hat off to you, because I remember you meeting in schools and just giving information and taking criticism from the community, and that really wasn't meant for you, but you took it in stride, and some of those meetings were like 11... you took it in stride, and some of those meetings were like 11, 12 o'clock at night, but you stayed as long as the communities wanted to stay, and they were day after day after day for a very long time. And for you to now come to fruition for this kind of success is phenomenal, so, again, keep up the good work. I can definitely see change, especially in one of my most impoverished areas that have a very high number of corner liquor establishments, and, you know, some of the complaints haven't been out, you know, it's a different kind of complaint that the Police Department should be handling, but you are, I can see a positive road moving forward, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Gentlemen, thank you. Keep up the great work unequivocally, in my humble opinion, one of the top five performing agencies in the city. Really appreciate everything you guys do, and I have a great evening.
Thank you.
We've got 12 minutes. We're gonna recess for 12 minutes.